I think we'll turn on the camera. So, good morning, everybody. Welcome to April 8th. Beautiful sunny spring morning with a little bit of white cover still unfortunately. Hopefully that'll be leaving us soon. But we're going to be starting off today with a public hearing and we're going to turn things over to our Director of Corporate Administration to read aloud the notice.
Good morning. As required by the Local Government Act, a public hearing is being held at this time to hear from anyone who may be affected by the proposed changes to the city's zoning bylaw. The proposed amendment in bylaw number 4163 is to rezone the property located at 1505 100th Avenue from C4 Commercial Service Zone to RS1 Residential Single Family Zone, and there were no written responses received.
Excellent, thank you. So we'll look to the gallery then, call three times if there's any comments. Calling a second. Seeing no one wish to speak, we will close the public hearing. And on that, if council has everything up and going, we will call to order the regular meeting of council for Monday, April 8th. We do not have anything listed under new in council business, but I'd like to turn it over just in case there was something maybe that came in late. Counsel Wilbur?
Only just because I just felt the hack push. A few things. I did attend Malkin Friendship Center for their hot soup kitchen and to be with Damian to handle, he handed out 20 food hampers which consist of breakfast, lunch, and dinner. So, good on our little Dan- Dawson Creek's little Damian. I did go to the Kofi Convention and I will have it right up for next meeting. It was actually very interesting and they were very excited to have someone from Dawson Creek there when the news came out about LPs, so that was kind of nice. And there is some, some new stuff coming down the line that will affect our OSB mill here, so that, that'll be exciting and I'll have that for next meeting. On another local note, I just want to say thank you to all the volunteers at the Ski Hill for another successful season and a really successful family day. So, thank you again for running another good program this winter.
Excellent, thank you. Before I turn things over to Counsel Malkinson, just on behalf of the rest of council as well, our condolences for the loss of your mother and that was an amazing turnout at the service and I hope all is well, but go ahead.
Thank you very much, your worship. I did want to say this morning that I thank all of you for your condolences and the city's condolences. It's very supportive and appreciated in the, in that difficult time. I just wanted to mention a couple of things this morning. I wanted to congratulate all involved with the Easter Extravaganza that was held a couple of weekends ago. Again, a very successful, very well-attended event and, you know, one of those that emphasizes families, it's very, very near and dear to me. I also wanted to congratulate all those with the, that were involved with the Relay for Life breakfast held last weekend. It was a, it was a good event as well, well-attended and good work.
Thanks for that. Counsel Kenny?
I just wanted to mention the Civic Awards that are going to be held Friday night, this, this Friday and hope that people pick up their tickets and, and attend this, this event and support your community.
Sure, and actually, on that, it was interesting, if you can comment about how the public, the community actually gets to have a say in the winners this year.
Yeah, that's right, yeah. There's a survey that went out to the Chamber of Commerce membership and others and so that you can actually choose from the list of nominees. So, yeah, that is great and that way it'll make it a community decision, which is what the Chamber of Commerce was shooting for.
Yeah, no, I think that's, I think that's a great idea, so thanks for helping out with that. Anything else under council business? No? Okay, so on that, we will move into the minutes. We have, under 3-1, we have the minutes of the public hearing and regular meeting from March 18th for adoption. Counsel Malkinson, seconded by Counsel Schuman. All those in favor? Opposed? It's carried. Was there any business arising from anyone? Okay, so seeing none, we'll move on to correspondence. The first item under correspondence is the Federation of Canadian Municipalities, the FCM. This is the invoice for ratification. Counsel Parslow? Okay, seconded by Counsel McFadden. I assume there's no discussion on this? So, all those in favor? Opposed? It's carried. 5-2, another one for ratification. This was the letter for Astral Media. This is the request for support for their CRTC application with Bell. Counsel McFadden, seconded by Counsel Parslow. All those in favor? Opposed? It's carried. 5-3 is a letter from the District of Invermere and this is around a UBCM executive taking action on the concept of towns with no people. And they've, we didn't put this under correspondent, or sorry, under the, the end of the meeting, sorry, because they were actually asking if we would do anything but to the council. Otherwise, I would have put it under, yeah, so. Counsel Parslow, go ahead.
I couldn't help but think of Tumblr Ridge when I read this and when Pat Walsh was appointed Commissioner. And so I wonder how, how in sort of a ski development area or even a mi- a new town for mining, how, how would the, these people see initial governance being established? They don't, they don't articulate any options. So, I, I can't support, support it without, I mean, I just don't have any idea how a provincial government would have an alternative course of action, I guess.
I believe it'll come up with the UBCM too as well through a resolution as you see here, so. So, just a motion then, probably for information would be in order?
I would make that motion.
And Counsel Malkinson is seconding. Any further discussion then? You can have your say at UBCM if you wish. Okay, so all those in favor? Opposed? It's carried. 5-3 is the letter from the BCSPCA and they're looking at doing a community challenge fundraiser. They have a request in front of us. Counsel Malkinson?
Maybe before a motion is made, your worship.
Thank you.
I might say that we agree in principle to the placement of it near the Safeway parking lot, but, you know, I'm not even sure how the city would, you know, factor into that. Having a sign there would be, you know, dealing with Safeway, isn't that right?
That would be private property, so maybe council's indulges prior to a motion, then maybe Jim, you can just...
Yeah, through your worship, of course, it would be third-party advertising, so it would be prohibited by your signed bylaw. You'd have to provide a waiver of that.
Okay, gotcha.
So, if that was, what you could do then is make a motion to waive our bylaw if they're in agreement with Safeway to put it there.
Sure, yeah. I think that's a good way to go.
In this situation.
I don't think the Mile Zero post is the best way to go and I spoke to the lady behind the request and she said that she understands that quite well.
Okay. So, did you catch that? Motion from Counsel Malkinson? Jim?
Through your worship, there's been a similar situation with the Fall Fair and Exhibition Grounds and their fundraising thermometer for their roof, which is, has been on the boulevard in front of inland there, similar, very similar situation.
Yeah, thank you. So, seconded by then Counsel Wilbur. Any comments? Aside from wishing him the best of luck, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Good. I always love seeing the thermometer go up quickly. So, all those in favor? Anyone opposed? Okay, it's carried. And as we're moving right along, we have delegations, quite a few delegations coming up at 9 o'clock, but we'll skip over that for now and two reports. First report is 7-1 and this is report 13-065 from the Director of Corporate Administration. This is around the Mile Zero Park Society appointments. So, Counsel Wilbur?
I'll make the motion that report number 13-065 from the Director of Corporate Administration regarding the Mile Zero Park Society director appointments be received for that Marilyn Howard and Tim Bennett be reappointed as City of Dawson Creek representatives to the South Peace Mile Zero Park Society for a term of one year.
Thank you, seconded by Counsel Malkinson. I don't believe, we, we actually don't need a motion to continue on with Counsel Parslow there because those are under the appointments that I do and that's going to continue on, so. And Counsel Parslow, from what they, what we heard at the budget meeting, everything is fitting in quite well down there.
Yes, it's, I, I enjoy it, actually.
Good. Did you have a comment, Counsel Wilbur?
I just wanted to thank Marilyn Howard and Tim Bennett for letting their name stand and continuing for another year. Without volunteers, we would get too far, so I want to thank them for that.
Counsel McFadden?
Are they all just a one-year appointment for everybody on there?
The city, I believe from the city side of things, a one-year appointment string.
It could be a two or, a two-year or a three-year.
That would mean a change under their constitution because we have no control over that, but maybe Counsel Parslow can speak to that.
Yeah, I can speak to that. That is a matter that is before the, I think, the AGM to tomorrow night. There are many who think that they should be, all directors should be appointed for three years, but the consti- they, they need to amend some stuff.
Thank you.
Any further questions then? So, all those in favor? Anyone opposed? Okay, it's carried. 7-2 is report 13-063 and this is around remedial action for 1136 105th Avenue. Counsel McFadden?
I would move that report number 13-063 from the Director of Infrastructure regarding remedial action, 1136 105 Avenue be received, further that council impose a remedial action requirement to completely remove the fire damaged structure no later than May the 31st, 2013. Further, that staff be directed to notify the owner of the subject property as per the requirements of the community charter. And further, that the owner be advised that a request for reconsideration by council must be received in writing no later than April 17th, 2013. And further, that should the work not be completed by May 31st, the staff be directed through employees and contractors to enter into the property and complete the remedial action requirement to completely remove the fire damaged structure and recover its costs from the owner by adding such costs to property taxes for the property.
Thank you. Counsel Malkinson was just looking over to make sure you weren't reading the whole report and just the recommendations, so. Seconded by Counsel Wilbur? And any questions on this? No?
I think you should repeat it.
Do I have to read it? So, no questions, so all of those in favor then? Anyone opposed? It's carried.
Just a comment, I think the next budget meeting will be a long, long meeting.
I think that was a dig, Counsel.
I think it was.
Yeah. 7-4, oh, sorry, 7-3 is report 13-064 from the Deputy Director and this is regarding removal of lots for city land sale list. Counsel Parslow?
I'd like to move that report number 13-064 from the Deputy Director of Infrastructure and Sustainable Development, where removal of lots from the city land sale list be received. Further, the properties 1901 through 1925 101st Avenue, 8805 and 8809 28th Street and 1213 95th Avenue be removed from the land sale list.
Seconded by Counsel Kenny? Were there any questions for this? Counsel Malkinson?
Just to make sure that, well, maybe to check my reading, your worship. It's recommended to remove all these properties from the land sale list because, you know, they haven't sold and that they're actually not very usable. You know, one's in a ravine and the other one's, I don't know.
In floodplain areas, but Jim, I know a bunch of it's in the report, is there anything else maybe you want to add to that? Because I know they have been on the land sale list for a long time and, but I don't feel they're ones that we want to actually see utilized.
Well, through your worship, the ravine property, as you know, tends to be underwater whenever we have a heavy rain or right now. And the lots up on 20A, several times people have come in interested, we've required an engineering report, the engineering report has come back such that they don't want to complete the transaction, so this just saves people spending that money for no particular reason.
So, my question then, Jim, is we remove them from the land sale list, they now stay city property, what's, are we going to try to look at then putting a plan for that land? Will we look at putting it on the parks list eventually or something? Because we, if we're not going to...
Those are options for you, your worship?
Yeah, because if we're not going to be trying to sell them, we need to be doing something with them. There you go. But first step is to take it off the list. So, no further questions? I'm sorry, Counsel.
Sorry, sorry, no, no, never mind.
Okay, no problem, so all those in favor? Anyone opposed? It's carried. Okay, 7-4 is report 13-074 and this is regarding the development variance permit application for 901 120th Avenue. So, Counsel Schuman?
Yeah, I'd move the recommendation that report number 13-074 from the Director of Infrastructure and Sustainable Development regarding the development variance permit number 13-01 for Janus E. Mid requesting the minimum exterior side setback for the principal building be reduced from 3.0 meters, meters to 2.4 meters at 901 120 Avenue be received and further that staff be directed to proceed with the notification process for development variance permit number 13-01.
Thank you, seconded by Counsel McFadden?
Sorry, I forgot that name.
Empty. Any questions? Counsel Wilbur?
I don't know, I don't really have a question, it's verification, so it's out there. There is an existing deck at, already at those setbacks, it's just a variance because she wants to put a roof on it, so. But there is actually an existing.
Yeah, there's an existing deck, but, but with the, with the roof enclosure now, it doesn't meet the, it needs a variance completely now to, to allow that, otherwise you'd have to change the sizes, so. Okay, so all those in favor then? Anyone opposed? It's carried. 7-5 is report 13-069 and this is regarding our janitorial tender for the city facilities. You trying to see if it's a long one first? If you want to use the Counsel. Okay, Counsel McFadden?
I would move that report number 13-069 from the Deputy Director of Community Services, re-janitorial tender, 2013-04 be received and further that the janitorial contracts be awarded for a three-year term commencing May the 2013 ending April 30th, 2016 as follows. City Hall is Tumax Cleaning Detachment, JJ McCouch and Sons Telecoms, Browns, PW Yard, Browns Airport, Lynx Express Baggage and Shuttle, the library is Audra Corn.
Excellent. Seconded by Counsel Schuman. And Counsel Parslow, it's not just the budget meeting, Counsel McFadden will be chairing the next city council meeting as well, so you can tease him all you want.
I'll be looking forward to that, I'm sure.
Any further discussion? Go ahead, Counsel.
The numbers attached to it, for example, the library, 27,600, per year or for over three years?
No, per year, but Jim?
Yes, that's the annual cost, your worship.
Annual. Thank you.
Counsel Malkinson?
I'm not sure if I'll be able to be, if it'll be possible to provide me with any information, but it seemed like there was a, maybe an unnatural increase in the janitorial for this building, maybe a 6% or 7%? You know, when most people are keeping theirs consistent, I was wondering if there's any information that could be provided about that.
Through your worship, there's, the two bids received were both in the same, very close to being the same amount and neither provided any explanation for variance over previous.
And when you go up to RFP to do this, I mean, we, as a city, we choose to use private individuals rather than hiring in-house city staff to clean our facilities because we feel, feel it's better this way, but with that, you have to put out an RFP and get what people are charging.
Okay. Sounds good.
Any further questions then? So, all those in favor? Opposed? And it's carried. 7-6 is report 13-076 and this is regarding our leisure access policy. Counsel Wilbur?
I'd make the recommendation that report number 13-076 from the Deputy Director of Community Services regarding leisure access policy be received, further that council approve the leisure access policy as presented and further that council waive 5,000 in fees annually to fund leisure access.
Excellent, Counsel Kenny is seconding and any questions then from council? Counsel Parslow?
Yeah, I noticed in the report that if council approves this, that the regional district will be, will be contacted to, what I assume to match this or to be engaged in this program. Right now, this is just for City of Dawson Creek residents, correct? Regional, the regional district residents would not be able to avail themselves of this.
I'm going to turn that over to Jim to explain.
No, your worship, that wouldn't be our understanding. It would be any potential patron of the pool, anyone who is a, a normal user of the pool.
Because right now, we don't have a mechanism set up where we're checking people's...
No, I reckon, I thought that.
Are they within the limits, so thank you.
So, I, I noticed that commenting the report, in order to financially sustain the program, if approved, staff will be inviting local businesses, the Peace River Regional District and any other willing donors to participate in the programs. I imagine the regional district would, would engage in this.
We would hope so.
Take on their fair share, yeah.
We would hope so, yes. Counsel Wilbur?
I was just going to add, given the support of the Easter Extravaganza we just had by local business, I don't foresee a problem.
Yeah. Okay, any further questions then? Okay, so seeing none, all those in favor? Anyone opposed? It's carried. 7-7 is report 13-070 and this is regarding our transportation master plan. Counsel Schuman?
I would move the recommendation that report number 13-070 from the city planner, re-RFP 2013-03 Transportation Master Plan be received, further that council award RFP 2013-03 to Boulevard Transportation Group for 72,775 plus applicable taxes.
Seconded by Counsel Malkinson and anything from council? Counsel Parslow?
Here is a question, can I, can we be told a little bit about Boulevard Transportation Group? Who are they, where are they from?
Sure, I'll turn that to Jim, who'll probably turn it over to Kevin.
Oh, well, through your worship, I'll have Kevin answer that one.
Yeah.
The question is just, can you tell us a little bit about Boulevard Transportation Group? Where are they from? What their experience is?
Through your worship, the Boulevard Transportation Group is from the Lower Main Line, but they have done work in the rural regions. They have done work in Burnsville, just west of Prince George and their references checked out very well, so I have no reason to believe that they, they can't do the work nor would they be unfamiliar with the northern province.
Okay. Any other questions then? So, all those in favor? Anyone opposed? It's carried. Move on to the last report we have, which is 7-8 and that is report 13-078 and this is regarding the strata conversion of the buildings located at 60 105th Avenue.
I, I don't have internet right now.
Well, you don't have it up?
No. It's not working.
It's a little longer, that's why I thought Counsel McFadden was going to read it. Counsel Parslow, go ahead.
Okay, so we get this on, on the table, the report number 13-078 from the Director of Infrastructure and Sustainable Development, re-strata conversion of existing apartment at 860 105th Avenue be received. Further, that approval be subject to a favorable building code compliance review. Furthermore, that the strata conversion of the 10-unit apartment at 860 105th Avenue from a single ownership to 10 strata properties be approved and the approving officer be delegated, sign in authority for the subdivision as per section 242 of the Strata Property Act.
Okay, and seconded by Counsel Schuman. And questions then? Counsel Parslow?
Yeah, I, I, I just made the motion to put it on the table. You know, we've had experience of other properties being, if I can use the word privatized and rents going up astronomically. I'm a little concerned, is this a similar situation? That the potential that we decrease the availability of affordable housing?
Yeah. Since the developer, the owner of this property actually never came in and spoke with me, I'm assuming spoke with staff, so maybe I can turn it over to them if they have any information on what their actual plans are?
I'll just kick that to Kevin.
Thanks.
Through your worship, what they've indicated to us is that they plan on obviously purchasing the building, selling it to 10 owners, renovating, and the impression I had is that they would be investment properties, not necessarily, the owners wouldn't necessarily be living in it, so they would be returned to rental stock. But again, with renovations and stuff, there's no indication of what those rental rates might be.
So, on that, Kevin, I have a question. Under the Landlord Tenancy Act, if it stayed a single owner and he himself chose to renovate it up and spend, spend a lot of money renovating, does he have the right to, obviously has the right to do that, it's his facility, but then there's stipulation around what they can do for rent increases, or do you know anything about that?
Actually, your worship, there's no difference between 10 owners or one owner in that regard.
That's what I thought.
And yes, you can evict tenants for the purpose of renovation and yes, you can move your rental to a market rate at the end of renovation.
So, Counsel Parslow's kind of comment then, so the strata wouldn't actually stop, delay, or change if they want to do the renovation and raise the rates then? We have no authority there. Counsel Schuman?
Yeah, and how I see this is, so we're losing 10 rental units, but we're gaining 10, I would assume, affordable properties for resale, right? Like, I mean, if it would be...
For sale.
They would be for sale and I'm assuming they would be, they would fall into an affordable rate.
I don't know about affordable, how do you?
I, I, I would assume that Counsel Schuman is referring to just the size of the properties, the location.
Yeah, they're not going to be, you know, $500,000 or something like that. They would be individual properties available for sale and I know that, you know, the, the fear is that you're taking away 10 rental units, but I do believe we are adding rental units, you know, daily to Dawson Creek through the duplexes and the new apartment building.
Yeah. Counsel Parslow just raises a good point, though, about the affordability index within the community around rental stock, so.
Well, we also know the, the rental prices of these duplexes and a council, I, I had the impression that council was concerned about the availability of affordable rental. I mean, not everyone works in the oil gas industry can afford the duplex rents that are being charged right now and I'm not sure that I could afford them actually. And so, I, I just wonder, I don't know if we can do anything about this, but it's, it's a concern. I mean, I know some people who live there and I know the rent that they pay. I know what happened at Willerboro, at the townhouses at Willerboro, I think you all know that. And so, I, I'm just flagging it, I guess, as a concern.
The flip side to that, as to be an optimist, is they are quite small little units, the price would hopefully be somewhat affordable on a purchase side of things and, you know, you look at maybe the, almost like a starter home for some people who have been looking for opportunity to buy something small and affordable to get into the purchasing market rather than renting, so there is a possibility with that as well, so. Just trying to be glass half-full on this one.
That was my point.
Okay. Any other comments then? Okay, so all those in favor? Opposed? Counsel Parslow, but it does carry. I'm sorry?
I'm just abstaining.
Yeah.
I didn't have enough information.
Yeah, so unfortunately, there's no such thing as abstaining, that means you're in favor, so. It does carry them. And on that, it is 9 o'clock when we finish reports, so I am going to put things back into the delegation. Is Tara outside? There she is. So, we're going to start with our delegations. The first delegation I have under 6-1, we have some city staff in attendance for a proclamation and this is for pitch-in week. Excuse me. And I'm going to start by, I'll read out the proclamation. We've been through this almost on an annual basis, haven't we? We've been through this almost on an annual basis, haven't we? Whereas hundreds of thousands of Canadians show their concern for the environment in their communities each year by participating in Pitch In Canada projects to reduce, reuse, recycle, and properly dispose of waste, clean up and rejuvenate local neighborhoods, green spaces, ravines, waterways, and illegal dump sites, restore habitats, and to establish composting and recycling projects. And whereas Pitch In Canada, a national community-based organization comprised of eco-action and community volunteers, believes that maintaining a quality of environment and encouraging civic pride is everyone's responsibility. And whereas Pitch In Canada encourages voluntary action to keep communities clean and beautiful, and restore and maintain a healthy environment. Now therefore, I do hereby proclaim and invite all citizens in our community to actively participate in the week of April twenty-first to twenty-seventh, two thousand and thirteen, as Pitch In Canada's Operation Clean Sweep Week in Dawson Creek. Forward!
This knows about it. So we don't mind the garbage.
The garbage somehow miraculously shows up as the snow.
Exactly.
Okay, so like our weather conditions, Pitch In Week is technically April twenty-first to the twenty-eighth, but ours is scheduled for May eleventh is our cleanup date. The week of the twenty-first to the twenty-seventh, Counsel Wilbur, Forestry Office gets tree, tree awareness this year. And so we've got neat involved with school presentations, so that's what's going on the week of the twenty-first to the twenty-eighth. And then we also have seniors pickup week, which is the Rotary Club, so that's scheduled to be sixth and seventh. And then we have our community cleanup day, which is everything's eleven. And so we're encouraging community groups, we've got sixty-two areas identified in the city to clean up. Only six have registered, so hopefully we get soon. And we have four schools right now participating in the week of Pitch In, and for Counsel Wilbur to speak at a variety of schools, so.
Excellent, so, so as always then, we're looking for people to phone, phone in City Hall and register to help them?
Last year, there was a few areas that still never got identified because we did have a lack of some areas covered by, by groups, so.
Would be a swap identity?
Yes, there's a swap in shop, and Melanie's got more, Joe's details coming to the times, and she's gonna do it a little bit differently so that it's not just people going there and taking things, but that it's more equal, that you drop something off and, and take something, so. So besides having its great opportunity for sports groups to, an honorarium, a two-hundred-dollar honorarium for the area. And like she said, the swap and shop will be on there as well, and so as an added bonus, we have the Kington Club again helping with the community barbecue after the cleanup.
Excellent. So yeah, so we encourage, encourage the community groups to come forward, but I, I think on that, we can also put the challenge out. In some of the areas where we don't have community groups, there's, there's no harm in grabbing your neighbor and having a fun day of it, just cleaning up your own neighborhood as well. Every, everybody who does a block helps out, it's just helping your own neighborhood, so. Thanks very much. And we do have one other proclamation for me to do today, and we have a fire chief in attendance, that I'm gonna read out a proclamation and invite him to come forward. So whereas nine-one-one service is a lifeline that people depend on in emergencies, and whereas emergency service dispatchers and call takers are the first contact with citizens who use the nine-one-one emergency number, and whereas emergency service dispatchers and call takers have the responsibility to initiate a response of fire, police, and ambulance to assist citizens in any emergency, and whereas emergency service dispatchers and call takers are supported by technology specialists and support staff who work behind the scenes to ensure citizens are provided with the needed assistance. And whereas emergency service dispatchers, call takers, and support staff have the greatest concern for all citizens and for the safety of firefighters, police officers, and paramedics who serve, I therefore now do hereby proclaim April eighth to fifteenth as Emergency Service Dispatch and nine-one-one Awareness Week in Dawson Creek. And Shorty, I invite you to come forward. And maybe if I can give you a few minutes and maybe explain the region here, I'm wondering how things have worked.
Well, for those of you that may not know, we dispatch, our fire department in Dawson Creek dispatches six other departments in the area. And dispatchers are typically the people that work behind the scenes, are the ones that answer the phone, they initiate the, the dispatching of our equipment, and so far too often, they're missed in the whole process, so this is just a way of recognizing different contribution to the whole process of fighting fires.
And, and not just, yeah, fighting fires obviously is a big one, but people who phone in nine-one-one, as we're talking about, the dispatcher the other end is their first contact, who not only has to take the information accurately, but also has to, in most cases, try to calm the person down who's going through a stressful situation, try to help it, in that respect too, so.
Absolutely, they're usually the calming, first contact, calming person, absolutely.
Excellent. Well, thank you very much, I know we have our dispatcher in person here too, so please pass on our best as well.
Oh, well, she wouldn't be, she kept here today, she's off this week, so.
Well, thanks a lot. We're going to move to six, three under delegations, and we have Ms. Linda Studley in attendance. Better Home, former Cassie, I believe, and you have a whole delegation as well, I see, and.
Your worship, Mayor Bernier, and counsel. I'd like to introduce the representatives that have come with me today. Arlene Fort of the Better At Home Program, Brigida Ratchkar of South Peace Community Resource Society, and Margaret, here's Margaret.
Right behind you, on the other side, yes.
Margaret Sutton from South Peace Seniors Access Services Society. And we have a volunteer here, Kathy Mold, she's been with us almost since the very beginning of the program.
I'm a volunteer too.
Yes, Margaret is a volunteer too.
And I see Stefan just walked in behind you as well.
Ah, yes. Stefan Pavlis of Spikers as well. Now that we've navigated the alphabet soup. We're pleased to report that the Cassie Pilot Project was a resounding success. Volunteers have contributed nearly four thousand hours of service. Friendly visits, shoveling snow, mowing lawns, hanging curtains, walking dogs, so many other things. Our Cassie housekeepers have put in nearly a thousand hours helping seniors with cleaning their homes. Local businesses and organizations have been very generous and very supportive of the project too. We now celebrate the next step, the transition to the Better At Home Program. As of April first, the Cassie Pilot Project became the Better At Home Program, and was joined by nearly fifty new sites throughout the province. But aside from a new name, a new website, and a new phone number, Better At Home will not be much different from Cassie. We're still in the same office at the Co-op Mall. We still have the same host agencies, South Peace Seniors Access Services, and South Peace Community Resources Society. We are still funded by the government of B.C. and managed provincially by the United Way of the Lower Mainland. But best of all, we will still be offering the same services to Dawson Creek seniors to help them remain independent in their homes and connected to the community. We would like to thank the city of Dawson Creek for their support of the Cassie project, particularly with their help with the ticket to ride seniors transit tours. We also enjoyed having several of the councillors ride along on some of those tours. And we below, believe that this support shows that the city has this commitment to making Dawson Creek not only the place to live, but the place to retire. We'd like to invite Mayor Bernier and all the councillors to join us on Monday, April fifteenth, at one-thirty P.M. as we officially launch the Better At Home Program with a grand opening celebration at the Better At Home offices. We are very proud of the work that Cassie has done in Dawson Creek, and we are very pleased to be able to continue that work through the Better At Home Program. Thank you.
Good. Well, thank you very much. Did you have something, Arlene, you wanted to?
Yeah, I just wanted to show you, these, these are our new brochures. And in them are all local people, all local seniors. I think that's absolutely wonderful that we can do that. And actually, we have one of the volunteers here, that are in the brochure.
She's a star. Are there any questions about the Better At Home Program or Cassie? I'd love to answer any questions if you had any.
Sure, I'm not sure, um, I wanted to put it out to council if there's any questions, but I start off by just saying thank you very much. I mean, I've heard nothing but compliments, positive comments about Cassie, and the success that it, it has had in the last few years, and so I know that's not going to change, and in fact, probably enhance and get better with this new program. And I assume you always want to find more volunteers, more people to find out, to help out. And I was talking to my mother last night, who volunteers for something similar to this down in the Lower Mainland. And she told me to remind everybody how rewarding it is as a volunteer.
Oh, absolutely. We, you know, we, we often, I mean, our, our mandate says that we are helping seniors, but, but truly, we're not just helping seniors. The, many of the volunteers have, have come to me and told me how important it's been in their lives, how they've made wonderful friendships, and the, just the, the feeling of giving back to the community. They, they're, you know, it's, it's enriched their lives, and I think it also enriches the community.
Well, and, and I was also, like, the seniors that we're helping, it enriches them, because if we can, and I think when we had Minister of State Ralph Sultana, and we were talking about projects, programs like this, where we're able to help seniors stay in their home longer, to help them keep independence longer, how that benefits them socially, mentally, benefits society as a whole, actually, so.
And the interesting thing is, is we have many seniors who are not only receiving services, but they are also volunteers. So perhaps a senior who might not be able to shovel the snow can go and be a friendly visitor, or might be able to drive another senior somewhere. So that's been a really, a really nice little circle happening there.
Excellent. Counsel Robert?
I just wanted to add that it's, I think too, and I got to brag about you guys a bit this weekend, so thank you for that, because there's some communities out there that don't have such a, a unique special network in their community, so. But I wanted to add something dear to my heart, because my parents are experiencing home care, so my dad can live at home. And I just want to thank you for what you enhance in a family, not just the senior or the community, but their actual families, so that they can just worry about family stuff and maybe not some of that other stuff, so I just want to say thank you.
I have to, I have to add that our location being right beside the Seniors Access Office has given us an opportunity, quite often when seniors might come in with their adult children, and they're, they're looking for different services, but they're not too sure where to go. The fact that we have Seniors Access that can, can help them with those aspects too, navigating the different agencies and paperwork, I think is, you know, it's, it's a great adjunct to the, to our program, and it's just a natural fit.
And obviously, by looking at some of the delegation behind you, the relationship, partnership, working with speakers is a huge asset as well.
Oh, absolutely. The fact that we have two host agencies is very different for, for many programs. Most programs will have one host agency, whereas we have two. And the programs, the, the agencies are quite different, and the Spikers has been here for many years, has a, a very established infrastructure. And they have these, these wonderful strengths that help our program. Seniors Access is a hundred percent volunteer organization, and has, but has such a depth of experience, hands-on experience and understanding, that they, they bring a whole different aspect to the program, so we're, you know, we're, we're doubly enriched having these two agencies, you know, hosting the program.
That's right. Well, as I mentioned to you a couple of weeks ago, I'm incredibly supportive of this because one of my goals in life is to eventually become a senior. So I want to make sure programs like this are available for me in a selfish way, so. Anything else from counsel? Any questions?
I'd just like to make a comment, seeing that I'm the volunteer coordinator. It is my job to find volunteers, so I'm putting it out there to all the council members, and you, your worship, that you might like to come in and volunteer with one of our seniors, because you will be amazed what you get back from just being a volunteer.
Matt, that's actually another interesting aspect of our program, in that the, the amount of time that is needed to be a volunteer is very, very flexible. We've had people come in and say, I've got an hour, what can I do? Okay, go hang curtains. We have other people who will put in six, eight, sometimes ten hours a month, more, visiting one particular senior, they develop these deep relationships. So no matter what you want to do, no matter how much time you have, or what your time constraints, it, it works.
But every hour counts.
Absolutely.
Do we have any seniors on council that have comments or questions?
Are you looking at me, your worship?
No, Duncan, actually.
No comment.
Well, thank you very much, and appreciate the invitation for next Monday at one-thirty, and I saw a bunch of councillors writing that down, we'll make sure it gets on the agenda as well, so for those that are available.
You should have invitations in your inbox.
Yes, I think, I think they are. So thank you for that, thanks for coming in.
Thank you.
He doesn't want to make eye contact with me, no. On that, we'll move to six, four, if Mr. Homie, is he out in the hallway by chance, or? Welcome, gentlemen. So we're at six, four. I have, I'm not sure who's gonna be the spokesperson, I have Barry's gonna be coming in, but I guess you gentlemen are gonna take the reins.
Yeah, Barry was tied up this morning. So I'm Daryl Viner, this is Ron Mock, Detective Clayne, President Stefan Pavlis from the Dawson Creek Curling Club.
Thanks, Daryl.
I would like to thank you for the opportunity to meet with counsel this morning, not only to inform you of the discussions that have been taking place with the Royal Canadian Legion, but to seek your input as owners of the curling ring. In January, a group from the Legion approached the board of the Dawson Creek Curling Club. They indicated to us that an increase in the rent at their current location was forcing them to look for a new facility, and failing that, they may be forced to disband the local branch. They wanted to see if an agreement could be reached to utilize the curling club. The board of the curling club formed a committee to try and reach a tentative agreement with the Legion, but the membership of the club would have the final say at our upcoming AGM on whether the club would actually enter into the agreement. After meeting with members of the Legion, the committee has proposed an agreement to the Legion pending approval of the general membership. Without getting into specifics of the proposed agreement, it would look like this. The lounge at the curling club would remain under the control of and staffed by the curling club, and would open to the Legion members for limited hours. It would not conflict with normal club activities such as school curling, leagues, and bondfills. Legion members would have to become members of the curling club in accordance with our liquor license, and would have use of the lounge for meetings, crib tournaments, and stake nights. We believe this agreement would work for both parties. It would make use of the club at times when it's currently closed, increasing revenue and providing our staff employment on more of a full-time basis, and would allow the Legion to remain part of the community. Once again, this issue is pending approval of the general membership. So at this time, would welcome any questions or comments.
So your AGM is next week?
It's Friday.
This Friday, okay. My first question, so you made a comment, Daryl, about you're going to try to structure it somehow where it's not going to interfere with the school activities. How do you see that happening? Because obviously, that might be a concern from some people, right?
Yeah, no, their, their, their hours wouldn't be what they are now. Like, it wouldn't open until the school curling is finished for the day.
So instead of being open at noon now, it would be open from three o'clock till eight? Um, throughout the day, and then if there's days when there's possibly elementary school, I think is in there, Thursdays after school, I believe, if that's.
If that's right.
Uh, so, you know, I mean, the, the Legion would have to, um, i- if it is a conflict, would that be closed during those hours as well? The, the one thing that I kind of want to make mention of is that the upstairs lounge is upstairs. The kids are downstairs. Um, so there is, there is separation, you know, with, I know the concern maybe is alcohol and kids, whatever. But, um, there is a separation there and, and.
So for clarity then, I believe the last letter we had looked, it looked like you were requesting for an application change for the liquor license for the entire facility. And now you're suggesting just a time change, but it'll be just upstairs. You're not asking for the downstairs at all at this time, or?
Okay, the liquor license that we asked for previously is, is a separate, totally separate.
Okay. From this?
Thing that the curling club wanted to do, nothing to do with Legion.
Yes.
That, that was asked for so that we could have alcohol served downstairs on the north end of the rink and, and roped off areas only for special events like bond spiel.
Definitely, yeah.
Oilmen's, men's league, or men's spiel, things like that, special events only.
Yeah. And I've seen that in other facilities.
Yeah. So just to open the door for a little more revenue, you know, things like that.
Yeah.
It is offered at other rinks.
Yes. Right now, the license, sorry, I know are two separate issues. Right now, the license doesn't allow that though, but this, this one here, you're talking about just a change for the, to assist with the Legion, so.
Yeah.
Okay. Counsel Schuman, sorry, did you have your hand up?
Yeah, he, Ron answered my question. I was just wondering if it was, if the Legion activities were just going to be confined to the lounge area.
Okay. Anything else on, questions on council this time? Counsel Parson?
Yeah, just clarify, I mean, we did get a letter last, was it last council?
Last council, yes.
And so, so it's fair to say then the curling club has adjusted its position as it relates to the liquor license? I know that's not what you're here for, is about the Legion, but just from my understanding, while you are here, are you, why are you asking for a change in the liquor license? Like hockey people, they ask for a special permit for special events. Why didn't you know that route?
Well, if, do you have a minute? We're trying to find different revenue streams.
Sorry?
We're trying to find different revenue streams. Right now, as it stands, we're trying to keep our doors open and we're having a hard time doing it. One of the things that we came up with is if we can try and get more people involved downstairs, maybe sell a bit more alcohol downstairs, that's going to bring more revenue for us. If it's, it's no lie that, I mean, as a club, it's, it's tough out there right now.
So you're saying that will be a regular feature of the curling club?
No, if it's actually located.
No, no.
So why did you, why didn't you know the route? Oh, I see. So you're intending to apply for special permits?
It was a recommendation from the liquor inspector to our management. That's what we do, so.
Yeah. But I, I think, Counsel, what we might see is for next year, such as maybe hockey and then where they apply for a special occasion permit for events, maybe as bond speels, but we can cross that road and we get there. But Jim? Yes, exactly. That's why I want to confuse the two.
We do still want to pursue that and we'll, we'll be.
That'll be later.
Hopefully coming back to talk about that before next year, so.
Yes. Jim, you want to?
Yes, sir, your worship. It's important for council to understand you have two roles in this. One role is representatives of the community who must provide an opinion to ECLC about any license changes. So you rejected the curling club's request last meeting and that's been communicated to the liquor inspector. But it does not necessarily mean that the liquor inspector will not grant the change. The authority rests totally with the provincial government. You just provide community input. Similarly, the request here to increase lounge hours, not only during the day, but so that it runs throughout the summer. You have, have a responsibility to provide community input on that requested change. But again, that's totally the liquor inspector's ultimate jurisdiction. That's different than your role as landlord. You have complete jurisdiction in your role as landlord. You have a lease with the curling club. In my opinion, although a lawyer, other lawyers might have different opinions, the request being asked for here on the curling club is significant enough that would require a lease adjustment. And that's totally up to you whether you wish to grant that or not.
Okay, but for the delegation, is there any further questions? Because obviously, from a process here, gentlemen, obviously we're not allowed to really discuss too much in front of the delegations. We'll be bringing it up later on in the meeting and making a motion or recommendations of, from a council perspective at that time. But just definitely want to make sure if there's anything else you wanted to say, if there's any other questions from council for clarification.
Well, if I may, your worship, but just for clarification, you're seeking our input into work, working out and arranging with the Legion whereby they would use the top part of the building, the lounge as we're calling it. And then at bond spiel time or special occasions, you would ask for a special permit to operate a bar out of the base, out of the bottom lounge. Is that, is that right?
Which might come at a later time.
Which may or may not come at some point down the road. Is that?
They won't be, the Legion will have nothing to do with the bar downstairs.
That's correct, yes.
They won't be there.
Yes, that's correct. Thank you.
Yeah, we just want to make sure we, two different distinct things.
Yeah, well, I was pleased, yes, one last thing. I was pleased to hear that, I, I've had residents contact me about this. And I think you're obviously aware perhaps now of the issue that, so I was pleased when I heard you say the after-school curling, you know, the bar won't be operated for that. I think that's one day a week. So that was the main concern. The school district, anywhere there's alcohol, they don't play students.
That's right. And there was also a misconception it was going to be downstairs.
Not be hampered in any way.
No, that's, that's correct. And we, we're totally considered the youth in this because there are, if there's anything against them, it's not going to happen. We're trying to work through a system that will work for everybody, including the, the kids. And we want to keep the kids there. Appearance is a big thing to us, so. We're just, we're just trying to work out a system and hopefully come to some sort of agreement that'll work for everybody.
Excellent, thanks. Counsel Kenny?
Yeah, it sounds like a good solution, but for, for both the Legion and for the curling clubs as revenue streams. And you might be able to develop a new league as well.
Well, Terrace has a very successful Legion bond spiel every year, as you know. So any other comments for the delegation? Well, thank you, gentlemen, for, for coming forward with this. And I appreciate the fact that you're trying to help out the Legion. It's obviously been something for the last, highlighted for the last couple of weeks, but I think for the last couple of years, it's been, you know, as a community, we're trying to make sure we keep our Legion open and look for opportunities for that. I'm a Legion member myself, so we want to make sure that it doesn't leave Dawson Creek, so. So I appreciate you at least working with them. Obviously, we have some issues that we'll have to figure out if or how we could work them out though, since it's a city-owned facility helping out an organization, so that will have to discuss after. Okay, but thanks for bringing it forward. I appreciate it.
Thanks, Counsel.
With that, we'll move into our, that's 9:30, move into our last delegation. We have Mr. Shane McNulty in attendance, who wants to, I believe we have a bunch of information. Thank you, sir, that you brought forward, though it's in our package. But definitely give you some time to address the issue. Good morning.
Good morning. I am just none more than a regular Dawson Creek resident. I am here kind of on a handful of issues that all kind of, kind of basked in together, being the way that, the way that I see the residential community being developed in Dawson Creek. I'm, I'm sure that the members of council can sympathize that what's happened up 17th certainly leaves, in my opinion, a bit to be desired as far as maybe flow and form and function to a, to a small community neighborhood. And in the future, I'd like to see it improved upon. I guess, I'm not going to kind of fight for words here, I've never been in a situation before.
Not a problem.
I guess what I, what I'm really getting at is that I don't, I'd like to see, I see in other communities, nice welcoming areas being built. And what I see happening here is very quick, very, uh, like, I don't want to say cheaply, but building houses very quick, very cheap. And my concern is what this is going to leave for us in the future as a community. I understand that there's obviously a shortage of affordable housing in Dawson Creek. And I, and I understand that with the allowance of basement suites, that we're trying to find solutions here. I just, I would like to see what I can do to try and make this happen better in the future. I provided some examples here from Grand Prairie of just a few pictures of the, of what I consider to be nice neighborhoods. And along with that, there's one specific set of regulations. Now, speaking to Kevin Henderson, the Director of Infrastructure, I'm realizing that's not really in our hands.
Yeah.
So unfortunately, I don't really have a lot of solutions here to present. I wish I did. I guess I'm coming here to hopefully try and find some solutions as far as ensuring that the community plan that has been drawn up for Harvest View is followed through with.
Shane, can I ask how long you've lived here?
I came here originally in 2000 to take the aircraft maintenance course.
Okay.
I did that, left for two or three years, and I've been back six years or so now. So I consider myself, you know, a, a local.
Yeah, no, definitely. No, the reason why, the reason why I was asking, obviously, as you, as you mentioned, the CDP, the Comprehensive Development Plan, and I mean, that's one that, you know, when you look up 17th Street, for instance, and that went out, working with the developers, went out to the community in partnership of what we'd like to see. And from a council, we've always tried to really try to have that blend. And, you know, you're working with developers and working with the builders. As long as it meets the zoning, it's, there's only some room we have, so.
I guess, like I say, I, I, I probably spent about a month putting some time into this, trying to figure out what I can do. And I'm trying to find some solutions as far as I'm personally going to address these developers and try and see what I can do to do it. In, like, in the meantime, in between time, you can see, um, up on 89th, here we've got this new duplex happening, which, I mean, I'm definitely not a fan of. It's right in my backyard. The property's zoned RS2, but with the bylaws allowing basement suites, effectively it's a fourplex. So, and, and along with that, I have a petition signed with all my neighbors. Now, this petition was gathered by one of my neighbors, but expressing the concerns of the residents of 89th Street, being like, we pretty much, we're, I was not informed, nobody else in the street says they're informed. So there's definitely, there's definitely a problem there. I'm not exactly sure where, exactly what the solution is going forward. I know that there is, you know, it is mandatory to inform residents and the residents are saying they weren't informed. So again, I'm sorry, I'm not presenting solutions here. I'm just kind of raising my concerns.
Yes. Well, and, and that's, I appreciate that. I mean, so there's lots of information that you also supplied here with, with that prior to the delegation. So council definitely has that and we can discuss it afterwards as well. But, and I appreciate, I appreciate what you're saying. It's hard to come forward.
I guess I would, I would hope maybe going forward that the council could back some sort of request to the developers. I mean, obviously, we, you guys, we can't say this is what you're doing, but maybe, maybe council would be interested in providing a request or some, or, you know, some suggestions for further development. And, and I would hope to kind of just relook at the whole, the whole scheme versus how we'd like to see things done versus how they're actually panning out. Because I see this wonderful plan, but I, it's just, I don't, I don't see it coming to fruition. So I, I'm, I'm here to raise that concern and, and see what we can do about it.
Very valid. Thank you for doing that. Is there any questions from council? I know it'll be discussed after, but go ahead, Counsel.
You mentioned that there was some sort of development happened that you or your neighbors were not informed about? What was that development that you're talking?
The rezoning of the first section of Harvest View to RS2.
Oh, I see.
Which was part of the OCP that we did in 2009 or 10?
Yeah, I haven't actually lined up the date of when that was approved to, who had ownership of when. But I'm, I can almost certainly say there's going to be at least one discrepancy in there, you know, at least one of these property owners.
Sure.
So as, again, I don't know what the solution is moving forward, but there's definitely a concern there.
Okay, well, thank you for your time, definitely, coming forward.
Thank you for your time. I guess I will hopefully follow up with council in the future and see what we can do.
Definitely, yeah. We'll, we'll be talking with, with staff afterwards and seeing what can, can't be done, what options are there. And, and just we have a better understanding from our end as well.
Great, thanks very much.
Okay, thanks for your time. On that, let's take five-minute recess and then we'll get back to the rest of the open meeting. So we're going to call the meeting back to order. And we are going where we left off now, which is under, which is bylaws. So our first bylaw we have is 8-1, this is zoning amendment bylaw 4163 for third reading and adoption. Counsel Schuman, seconded by Counsel Kenny. All those in favor? Posed? Carried in 8-2 is fire protection amendment bylaw 4172 for adoption. Counsel Wilbur, seconded by Counsel Schuman. All those in favor? Posed? It's carried in 8-3. 8-3 is the city of Dawson Creek indemnification bylaw 4173 for first three readings. And Counsel Malkinson, seconded by Counsel Kenny. Comments? All those in favor? Posed? It's carried. And 8-4, under bylaws, is our fees and charges amendment bylaw 4155 for first three readings. There you go, Counsel Wilbur and Counsel Malkinson. All those in favor? Posed? And it's carried. And that is it for bylaws. So that takes us to Mayor's Business. First item that, under Mayor's Business to bring forward is, we'll discuss the delegation. So we did have the first delegation requiring some kind of direction from council would be 6-4. And this is the one from the curling club requesting Royal Canadian Legion move into their operations into the upstairs. And Counsel Schuman?
Yeah, so I, I recognize that it's going to go to a vote of the curling club. And so it'd be interesting to see what, what they decide. But as far as I can tell, it seems like a, a good arrangement for the Legion. As long as, you know, and, and they were very, they seemed very clear that there wouldn't be Legion activities or bar activities when the kids were around. So I suppose that would be my main concern and they seem to answer those questions, so. If we're just discussing the matter, it, it seems to be an interesting solution. I am not making any.
No, well, actually, I'll make a motion first of all, that we refer this back to staff to give us, I would actually like to have a full opinion, staff and opinion, possibly even a legal opinion, because if we're going to have a private organization inside a city facility now, first of all, can we do that? We want to make sure we can, if that's council's direction. But then we also want to make sure that I think the community, the school district, everybody's on board. We need to make sure this is a community facility, so. So I'll make that motion and refer it back to staff for a report, so. Counsel Kenny, are you seconding or no?
Well, I'm just a que, a question.
So Counsel Malkinson's seconding and then I'll go to Counsel Kenny then.
Oh, I'm just thinking, yeah, and I guess staff will work on this, but isn't the Legion a non-for-profit society?
Yes.
It's not a business. And the curling club's a non-for-profit society. It's not a business either.
Yes, it's a city facility. I, I guess, I just want to make sure.
City facility, but they're non-for-profits that are leasing it. And I really can't see the difference between the curling rink or, or the Legion. Clubs struggle to, to survive and, and the curling has struggled. Like the, you know, where before you would have bond speels with, you know, like, that, there'd be a waiting list and, and a waiting list even to get into a league. And now there's, you know, now they don't have that anymore, so. But you still want the, the sport to, to live and you need the facility there.
I a hundred percent agree. It's just, I don't, I think it's premature to make a motion until we have all the information from a staff level of whether we can, can do this, right?
I'll second your motion.
Yeah, I believe it's been seconded, but thank you.
Sure, I'll back.
I, I guess my, my other thing is I just want to make sure that we have that information in front of us because there's lots of not-for-profit groups in our community. And I think we just need to find out, have we done this before? Is there precedent? What precedent are we setting? So does that mean minor hockey's not-for-profit? Soccer's not-for-profit? Rotary's not-for-profit? What are we, what message are we sending? So if your community, if your group is having issues, how do we help out now? And that's, I just want to make sure that we're not setting that precedent. Because I think, I, I agree with the curling club when they're here this morning. They're trying to find a win-win for everybody. And I think that's perfect. I just want to make sure it can be done properly. sure it can be done properly. So, sorry, did you have your hand up? Counselor Wilber?
Yeah, the only concern, I, I guess, and it can come back in the report as well, is my thought was, what about staffing? That it's our building, do we have to have staff there then, the hours that the Legion's open?
They can't care about all of that, but maybe I'll give it to...
Said they would continue to staff.
I just wanted to know if that's part of our lease agreement, or if that's something that would have to be looked at.
Sure, Jim?
Uh, through your, your worship, the Curling Club operates the entire facility. Uh, we do the protection of the asset kind of things, the capital work on the building, that kind of thing, uh, but the operation was handled by the Curling Club. Uh, the one area where there may be crossover is we provide the insurance on the building, and I'm actually just don't know what the effect on insurance would be for this change.
Yes, which is why I just, I think we just need to, I'd hate to make a motion that we allow and then find out afterwards that we couldn't, and we're out of order, so I want to make sure we have that information first.
Yeah, thank you.
Counselor Parzol?
Yeah, the, um, concerns around the curling, the youth, uh, was, uh, was certainly one aspect, but there's also other users in the general area, like, such as the Marzio or Fitter Street and the group, so on, so. I, I don't like, uh, passing an opinion about something unless I've seen it in writing.
Yeah.
So I would like to receive from the Curling Club, after its membership has been fully informed and determined its will, a proposal that shows the mechanics and the arrangements with the Legion. I mean, certainly I'm favorably inclined, based upon what I've heard today, but I want to see it in writing.
That's right, yeah. Jim?
Yeah, through your worship, uh, it occurs to me, I don't believe we have a current constitution from the Curling Club, so that's certainly something staff will secure, because , um, they're creating a new class of member.
Yes.
Uh, which is a non-Curling member. And, um, I, I don't know if their constitution allows that, but we would need to be sure it does, because we want to be protected from disenfranchised Curling Club member who comes forward with some kind of legal action, saying this was not, uh, lawfully enacted. We, we would need to be sure we had covered that off.
Yeah.
And secondly, we would need to see the details of the proposed agreement between the Legion and the Curling Club to know how we could write that into the lease if that was council's. I'd also like to contact the liquor inspector, because I don't know, it'd be interesting to know where they are at with even that first request that council refused to support.
Yeah. Uh, I, I mean, the biggest thing here is, I'm glad to see a group stepping forward, trying to help, because we don't want to lose, obviously, the Legion and the community. That's, that's the biggest thing. Um, so I, I, I got feelings, I think we want to be able to help this and support this, we just have to make sure we're doing it appropriately ourselves, right? So, but, uh, I'd hate to say we supported and find out afterwards that we couldn't. Counselor Malkinson?
So should we, uh, maybe, uh, make amendment to this motion to have, uh, Charlie's, uh, concerns identified as well? Maybe, uh, us, uh, having, you know, upon receipt of whatever, of the, uh, voting of the Curling Club?
I think we'll have, they'll have that meeting before that anyway, which, but, Jim?
Uh, actually, your worship, it's a good point, because I believe Counselor Parzol was, um, suggesting he would need to see what the other area stakeholders have to say about this.
So.
So that should be part of the motion, so it's not just the staff report. The staff report will have to include the outcome of the Curling Club fold issue, staff is identified, but also we will reach out then to speed skating and figure skating, minor hockey, who are also, and School District Fifty-nine, who are partners.
Okay.
What about the neighborhood at large? I mean, now you're basically adding a dringling establishment to the, the neighborhood that might, that wasn't there previously.
Yeah.
Maybe just a general consultation to everyone, I guess.
Yeah.
If that's council's will, we can do that as well.
Sure. Is that, uh, just a friendly amendment to staff direction under the existing motion, Jim?
Um, we should capture it in the motion, because I'm going to have to spend some money on this.
Okay. So, uh, Counselor Malkinson was making an amendment.
Sure.
To the motion, did you capture what that was, though?
Uh, that the motion be minded to include a request for staff to include consultation with other stakeholder groups and sports groups using city facilities and area residents.
Perfect. Uh, School District Fifty-nine, I think, was the one we wanted to hear.
Oh, that's a good one, yeah.
So, excellent. So is that amendment seconded, then? Counselor Kenny? Okay. Counselor Malkinson, any question on the amendment?
Just so that we have, uh, just so I have a good understanding, what, uh, what's the scope of this consultation here? Cheryl, uh, just, or, sorry, Counselor Schuman just mentioned, uh, uh, everyone in the community, obviously, we're not having a...
She just wrote it out, the neighborhood.
Just the neighborhood, sort of thing?
Neighborhood as well.
So like a rezoning, sort of thing?
Well, through your worship, we, we'd probably apply the same thirty meters that, uh...
Okay, yeah, that's good.
Uh, is on here, but actually, there's a row of homes that back onto that, that's the ones that we've, uh, proposed to put a notice to.
Okay. Okay. Counselor Wilber?
I'm just wondering, would that include the scope of maybe parents of our users of our skateboard park?
Uh, no, we don't have...
That was the community at large.
Right, so I'm just saying, is there a way for them to...
Well, that's true. Uh, maybe we need to put an ad in the paper and some stuff up on the website, just inviting general con...
That's when I...
Comment?
There is no formal parent for the skateboard club.
Well, I'm just saying, leaving no stone unturned, I mean...
The, this is only germane if there's a positive vote of the, um, Curling Club on Friday, so, uh, we'll get re- shelf ready to go, but we won't actually start expanding staff resources until we have confirmation of that.
Thank you.
That's true, thank you for that, because there's no point starting on this if the membership themselves turn it down.
Well, as you may have noted, there were at least as many members not on the executive as executive members here, and I assume they're not here because they're in favor of listening to the conversation outside. I don't think they're here because they're in favor of this.
No, and I did receive a few emails and phone calls on this as well, so it's, it's not an easy decision by all, so. That's good. So any other questions on the amendment, first of all? Which is basically broadening the consultations, okay? So, all in favor of the amendment? Anyone opposed? It's carried, any further discussion on the motion as amended?
I don't have a second.
Oh, sorry, Counselor Wilber.
Thank you.
Okay, motion as amended, any last questions? No? So all those in favor? Anyone opposed? Okay, and it's carried. So then we'll move on to, uh, the other delegation, we had six-five, and that was Mr. McNulty regarding the concerns he had of, uh, neighborhood look as the community continues to expand quickly, as he put it, so. Counselor Parzol?
I don't have any motion, but I do have some questions.
Sure.
Um, I don't know if they're, if you want to take them now, or, or want a motion for staff.
Um, actually, I'm bef- maybe prior to that, I want to look at, to Jim. From a staff level, was there anything you heard there that we need to, as a council, maybe be making a motion, um, to kick it back for information? Because I know it's, um, I mean, we have private developers up in that area, we have an OCP that was approved through the community process, which identifies and allows the basement suites and the duplexes in certain areas, so to his concerns, does council have any jurisdiction on scheme that he's referring to?
Well, through your worship, firstly, I should say that the delegation's remarks were significantly different than the delegation's written materials.
Yes.
Uh, so, uh, the deleg- the delegate himself seems to have two concerns. The first concern is the general mix of, um, allowable uses up there and how it was determined, the process that determined. Uh, but there also seems to be concern about the standard or quality of construction. Uh, those are two different things, um, and neither of them are the thing that was in the petition. The petition asks you to take an action to stop, halt construction of the duplexes that are being built there. Uh, council, of course, has no authority to do that, whatever, right? Unless you're intending to use taxpayer money to purchase those duplexes, you really don't have any effect over that.
Sorry if I can, Jim, I think he lightened it because of his discussions he had with Mr. Henderson, who explained to him how we couldn't, so he thought, there's no point bringing that forward when he found out there's, we had no jurisdiction to do it.
Okay, so, talking about where council could go going forward, um, the, uh, leaving aside the allegations about, uh, potentially someone not getting noticed, the, um, the rezone there was in keeping with the OCP, which was in keeping with the neighborhood plan, which was in keeping with South East Community Development Plan. So this is about a five-year process that led to council, um, firstly identifying, um, in the neighborhood plan, then identifying in the, um, South East Community Development Plan, which is important, because that means the ALR will approve lands coming out of the ALR if they're in keeping with that development, then rolled into the OCP. The mix up there is not a secret in any way. The intention of council, uh, has always been, after the neighborhood plan was developed, that there would be single-family, there would be duplex, there would be apartments in that order as you went north in that area. Uh, so, uh, the folks buying single-family homes there ought not to have had an expectation that their neighbors would always be single-family dwellings, because that's just not what the plan was. Um, your plan was a mixed density, increased affordable housing, anyway, it's just been through all these processes, so it's certainly not a secret. Um, and, you know, I, I'm not a hundred percent certain of this, because we haven't done the work for that, but my recollection is it was a non-controversial zoning, it was, uh, in keeping with the OCP. I believe most of the lots were in the hands of a construction firm from Surrey. Um, I don't, I mean, don't believe these folks were there at the time, that's what I'm saying. Um, but in any event, it was in keeping with this plan. Going forward, you could change the plan. Council can, has the full authority to cut the knees out from under Mr. Rorsen and rezone that to agricultural if you want. You have the authority to do that. Uh, in so doing, you will affect the property values, you will affect the plans that you've put in place, you will chill development in the community, and your deal with the ALR won't be in place anymore, so it'll just stay in the ALR, which I think would be fine for the petitioners. I think that would work wonderfully for them, but I don't think it's in keeping with your plan. Uh, on the second issue, which is form and character of the buildings, construction standard, um, there, the first thing in the document package is a deal that each property purchaser signed with the then-developer, Mr. Kaczynski. I believe you signed one yourself, your worship.
I did.
Uh, is that correct? You, I believe you signed one of those deals with Mr. Kaczynski?
Yes.
Uh, that was a form and character standard of construction, whether you can have a detached garage, where you can park your RV. All of that was the individual deals between Mr. Kaczynski and people who are buying the land. And in fact, it was registered to title, so it travels with each subsequent purchaser.
When I sold one of my other lots, I had to pass that on on a title.
Uh, in Mr. McNulty's case, I, I imagine that the first signature was with Ron Co. Construction from Surrey, and then when Mr. McNulty bought the land from them, then he would have been captured by the same requirements. However, that's a private deal between the developer and each individual lot owner, completely for the benefit of the developer, Mr. Kaczynski, to enhance his ability to sell lots. Once he's done selling lots, he has no further interest in, in enforcing those stipulations. And so, if you drive down that lot, that, uh, line of houses, you'll find detached garages, you'll find RVs parked where they're not supposed to be, you'll find areas that aren't landscaped or fenced, even though it's more than two years since they were built. Uh, but only Mr. Kaczynski can enforce those requirements, um, by making a civil claim, and why the heck would he? He sold all those lots, so he's got no interest. Uh, at the back of the package, there's an alternative method available in Alberta and actually in B.C. as well, where, uh, a developer, uh, proposes a form and character building standards, it can be as elaborate as the cupboards and countertops you have to use. Um, that's taken to the city, uh, the city, um, agrees that those are good and correct, um, building conditions, and enacted in a bylaw as part of their OCP. In B.C., that's only been done in resort municipalities. Whistler has it in some areas, Sun Peaks has it throughout their municipality, I believe the intention is that Glacier Resort will have it. But haven't, um, to date, no one in B.C. in an established community has taken advantage of the ability to do that. Uh, but it is quite common in Alberta where, uh, the delegate comes from, it's just not common here, and it was never contemplated by council for your neighborhood plan. Uh, your, um, you've decided that the market took determine what sightings are used, what roof lines are used, what cabinets are used, what countertops are used, and you don't intervene.
Okay. Counselor Schuman?
Um, I would like to move that we accept the petition for information.
Second.
Okay. Counselor McFadden is seconding, just as, so I guess it's on the record that we have the petition now? Okay. Is there any further discussion on that? Motion. So it's just to be on the record that we have that, concerns, those concerns, so.
And just about the petition itself, though?
Yeah.
Uh, um, what is, your worship, what is the requirement for, uh, notification on a rezoning? Sixty feet, is that right?
Uh, through your worship, uh, first, there's a general public notification, it has to be in the newspapers.
Yeah, in the paper.
Um, then there is a specific requirement in your bylaw, which is over and above anything in the public government, uh, sorry, in the miss or the community charter. Uh, you have imposed a regula- uh, regulation on yourself that anything within thirty meters, basically a hundred feet.
Hmm. Thirty meters.
This would be a, basically, a couple of houses on each side of the property.
Yeah.
Probably be...
Well, and your road right-of-ways don't count, so you actually have places in the community where your road right-of-way is so wide that nobody gets this specific notice?
Hmm.
That's, I mean, that's another option for council.
That's...
You could change notice, you could require signs on the property, I mean, you can, you can do as you wish, you just have to keep in mind, you got, uh, some of you have been here coming up seven and a half years, and you had another zoning hearing this morning. That's how ninety-nine percent of them go.
That's right.
Which is, nobody comes. So imposing extra cost on yourself to notify people when people really don't care. On the one or two that they care, you get a huge turnout, and they seem to find out, uh, when you had your proposed rezoning by Forest Park Drive, you had a lot of people here who didn't get noticed, yet they seem to be aware.
Yeah.
Uh, in the case of this instance, you wouldn't expect it to have been controversial, because it's all vacant properties owned by a developer in Surrey. You know, he, uh, you wouldn't have expected it to generate a big, uh, community turnout, especially because it was in keeping with, uh, the items that came out of big public consultations.
Okay. No further questions on that, then? Counselor Parzol, the motion is just to receive the, uh, petition, delegation for information. So you know what we're voting on. Did you have any further questions, yourself?
No, just, uh, I, I believe the city did a very thorough job in everything to, um, charrette meetings were well-publicized, and I believe one of our core values is inclusive, inclusive community, so we're not talking about segregated housing, and I'm strongly in favor of the council's position, so.
Good.
Yeah.
Okay, so all those in favor, then? Anyone opposed? Counselor Malkinson? Okay, it's carried. And on that, I'm going to kick things over to Jim for a second, wants to give us something.
Your worship, I know not everyone sitting around this table is a country music fan.
Yes, for sure.
That's, that's a form of music, Counselor Parzol.
But I want to talk about, um, I happen to be a country music fan, but...
Shame on you. Short chat was...
I want to talk about last night's association, our Academy of Country Music Awards.
Yeah.
That's the longest-running, um, country music award show going. I mean, at one time in the past, Alan Jackson was named the best new artist, that's how old that is.
So was Loretta Lynn.
We take for granted a new reality that we have here, that if you had suggested it ten years, well, actually, Wayne Dolan did try to suggest it ten years ago and was generally laughed at for it. Um, the majority of the people who presented at that show, the majority of the people who entertained at that show, and the majority of the people who won awards at that show who entertained at that show, and the majority of the people who won awards at that show have appeared or are going to appear at the Incanda Event Center. The album of the year went to Eric Church, and it was presented by Miranda Lambert and John Foggard. All of those folks have been at our, at our event center. Miranda Lambert was named Female Vocalist of the Year for the fourth time, tying Reba McEntire and Loretta Lynn as the only other female vocalist who won the award four times, and again, they've all been to or are going to be at the Incanda Event Center. It is just our new reality, but I urge you not to take it for granted because, like I say, it would have just got you laughed out of town not very long ago, if that's suggested.
Which, by the way, Loretta Lynn, Counsel Parzol, that's a country singer.
So I understand.
Very well-known.
I believe is, has or is very close to selling out, in fact, we've had to move the stage three times to have more tickets.
Loretta Lynn is not going to match Eric Church, but she is going to be very close. She will be an over 4,000 ticket event. Carrie Underwood, of course, is that, Alan Jackson has been that, Kiss has been that, Brooks and Dunn's have been that, Volbeat was that. And the second thing is, I need an item added to the.
Yes.
Confidential agenda to talk about the Incanda Event Center. I think many of you have heard there is an announcement coming Tuesday, but it has to come Tuesday, however, I am authorized to let you know in advance, but not in the public meeting.
Otherwise, that wouldn't be tomorrow.
Yes, tomorrow at 7:00 AM.
Hey, I don't have anything else under mayor's business, so let's go to the diary, Jim?
Nothing new on the diary, your worship? Oh, sorry, I shouldn't say that. Nothing new on the diary apart from the Calvin Crook Center, Duncan will give you a little update on Calvin Crook Center.
Morning.
Good morning.
Thought I was gonna get to go early.
Us too, but now I see you in front of me.
Here you are. I'll be, I'll be great. So, Calvin Crook Center, just broken it down into two parts, so our current status, essentially, there's two parts to the project right now, we're dealing with the old and we're getting ready for the, the new. So, our current status was, in other words, the old. Still working with PBI, PBI is still in the building. PBI is struggling to complete the remaining work at this time, it's, it's, the majority of it is paperwork that we're waiting on from PBI. They've got all of their lead paperwork in, which is great, we're working through that. From what I hear from our consultants, we are on, on target for lead gold, we're well within the, the range, so we're doing well there. But as far as commissioning, we're waiting on paperwork so that we can commission the mechanical system, which has been the delay to this point, everything else is either done or moved into the next contract, that being the basement, so just the commissioning is what, is what needs to be done. And I understand that doing weekly meetings to pressure GK Mechanical and pressure PBI to get that paperwork done, it's not something that we want to take over, we need them to finish it, so we're moving through that. It's been, also been brought to our, our attention that there are some liens on the building right now. There are, there are mechanisms built into the contract for PBI to deal with those liens. In short, subcontractors, suppliers not receive payment for any part of that project, they can lien the building, at which point PBI has to resolve it with their lawyer or put money in trust. They put money in trust, it goes to an arbitrator, or there's an agreement between the two parties, and that money's released. When that money is received in trust, the lien comes off the building. So there are some, some liens on the building right now. We're pressuring PBI to clear those up, in the end, if they don't clear those up, they don't receive any payment from the city. We have a 10% holdback on the project as part of the contract in the Construction Association documents, and we'll take the money out of the holdback, put it in trust, and the liens will be absolved at that time.
Yeah.
So we're working through that. It's, it's a process, and essentially, nothing really falls back on the city, either PBI puts that money in trust, or we do.
And, and I should have, just from my building experience, it's a normal process?
Yeah.
When you're dealing with subtrades, you hope you don't have to go through, but it's very common.
Yeah. So we're working through that process, but like we said, we have the mechanisms in the contract to deal with it. So that's where we're at. As far as moving forward, we had some test holes, Doug, some of you may have seen, last week, we had C Norman Trenching out there, they were doing some test holes to do some soil sampling, that'll give us our, our worksafe requirements for sloping and grading and determine how far out we need to go from the building while doing the perimeter drainage. They are expected to start April 15th, that's when Chad will be in there working.
Excellent.
Again, it's weather-dependent, just some consistency is all we need, and we can move forward with that, but he's getting everything together, as soon as he gets his soil samples back, can determine what his sloping will be, and that'll finalize costing as to how much sidewalk will require be replaced. And looking at the basement construction and just schedule moving forward, the target is have the tender out April 22nd or sooner, and we're looking at a contractor onsite, ask project managers to start contacting contractors now, let them know the tender will be come out, or be coming out, and to let us know their availability for bidding on that and starting in June. So they've, they've contacted a couple of local contractors and gonna follow up with them until that date. That's all I have to report right now.
Good. Any questions then? Counsel Parzol?
PBI, I thought you told us once upon a time, many, many council meetings ago, that they were leaving town and had finished.
Physically, they have left town, it's just the, the electronic documentation that we're waiting on, they have a site rep that has keys and can let people in, physically, they've been out of town since Christmas. But it's this paperwork that we're waiting on. I understand before I started the project, and even now, they've missed some targets, and we're pressuring them as best we can to hit those targets, but it has been a struggle, and it's been very difficult.
Very well put.
Okay, thank you.
This, by the way, is the part where Counsel McFadden tries to fire Duncan.
Okay, we go for it.
Would you like to make a motion?
No, I just, good job, Duncan. All things being equal, once Chad starts the work around the three walls, what's it, a month to do all that, or?
I would, I would say probably closer to two months.
Yeah.
I can comment that when he did get in there, the north and the east side of the building.
Yeah.
As far as the geotechnical, who was there in chat, they said the soil looked good.
Good, yeah.
It looked firm to say, the, the time of year, it looked normal.
Yes.
At which point, we haven't really found a lot of water in the basement in those two areas. The southwest corner, where we have found the majority of our, our leakage into the basement, he said was very soft, however, it looked like there was some old weeping tile systems that drained into that corner, really into nothing.
Wow.
So whether there was a renovation or something happened and they didn't repair properly. He also said that one of the areas they checked, and where water is coming in is actually a joint in the wall, and it looks like there may be some movement and separation in that area, and they're gonna pay particular focus when they seal the wall.
Thank you.
Good. Well, you see light at the end of the tunnel? Yes. Well, I'm also glad to hear that Duncan will be with us at least one more council meeting, so.
Thank you for that, Counsel McFadden.
Thank you.
Questions?
I think we're good, thanks.
Okay, thanks.
Never a dull moment around here.
Oh, yes, there is.
So on that, we have the consent calendar next, few items there to approve. Counsel McFadden and Wilbur, all those in favor, opposed, and carried, strategic priorities chart, Jim.
Yes, through your worship, I want to pay particular attention to your number one priority, which is your water security public meetings. We did the mail drop last week, which we had assumed would universally get to all mailboxes. We have heard from people who have not received it, which may be, just mean, might be a timing issue, maybe they'll get it early this week, but we're informed by the post office that if you are a household that has signed up on the no unaddressed ad mail, you won't get the flyer, because they have decided that our water security newsletter is unaddressed ad mail. And so, if you're in that situation in the public, there are, the same information is available here at City Hall, it's available at the library, it's available at the pool, but if you were to call in, it's available on the website, but if you would like a hard copy, just call in and we will mail you one addressed. We had not turned our mind to the idea that it would be unaddressed ad mail, but that is the situation. However, we are getting comments, we know it has got out there, so we're sure, hoping that we'll get a big response, and that we'll have a big turnout on April 24th.
Well, the big response is really important, we don't want to be like Chatwin, who asked about concerns of Site C and have eight people send in their opposed or in favor, and that, you know, 13 or whatever it was.
Well, maybe we'll just warn the community, that if they don't respond, then the seven of you will make this decision.
Sure, nobody wants to.
So if they're completely comfortable that the seven of you know exactly what they're thinking, then they need not respond. Six, sorry. You'll be on leave of absence.
Your worship, speaking of the leave of absence, did you say earlier this meeting that this was your last meeting, or not?
Yes.
Really?
Yes.
Oh my goodness.
Through your worship. I'm not sure we have a motion to that effect.
Don't think you need one.
Well, if you don't have a motion from council granting you that leave of absence, you'll miss the April 22nd meeting, you'll miss the two meetings in May that are 8th and 10th, I think, for budget, and you'll be disqualified. And the results on May 14th will then not matter to your future estimates, the merit of dust and creek, so I think you might wish to have a motion from council granting you that.
Under the charter, it's three consecutive regular meetings, but, okay, if, so it doesn't actually need, it's not needed, but. Counsel Parzol, second, counselor, or making a motion, Counsel McFadden?
I don't know, I think I'm opposed.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You want to keep me around, do you?
Yeah.
You're only losing me till the outcome of the election.
I'd like to make an amendment, maybe. We, maybe congratulate and thank Mike for his work at the city.
Why don't we do that, like, when it's actually?
I'm just missing a couple of meetings to have some excitement, but I really do appreciate that, Counsel.
Your optimism is noted.
Optimism.
Your optimism is noted.
Well, thanks for the motion, Counsel, all those in favor then? Anybody opposed? Counsel Schuman? Oh, no.
I'm voting in favor.
All right, where are we at?
Almost. And do we have anybody signed up then? Sorry, Jim, there's nothing else under the priorities chart, first of all?
Well, your worship, I would want to update you on the curbside recycling, the, at your last meeting where you had the delegation from Waste Management, they were talking about a quote qualifying offer that was coming from Mixed Materials BC about providing local recycling. It was supposed to come early in April, it has not come, we're investigating, but we are hearing that it didn't, it wasn't approved prior to this pre-election period, and so it may actually not be in play, that offer may not be in play this year, which would change the dynamic that was being spoken about at that meeting. I mean, would actually be in keeping with your strategic priorities, which was that you were going to spend this year working through this with your constituents and then potentially tender for that process for the following year. However, if you were going to be under a 30-day or a 60-day window to accept the offer, you were gonna have to have recycling in place, it's gonna compress your timelines. It appears as though that may have come off the table, but we're still investigating.
Okay, thanks for that, Jim, on that, you know, there was another individual in the community talking about wanting to be a part of this, and we've advised him that he would have to come as a delegation to talk with staff, do you know if any other companies have come forward, interested in bidding on the process?
The one individual that we have both heard from representing a company that is looking at moving into town, had been asked to come to this meeting and, and make a presentation, but didn't sign up to do so, so I don't know if the business plans of that company changed or if the timing just didn't work for them.
Just wanted to make sure. Good, so on that, any, so question-answer period, Brenda, anybody signed up for that today? Okay, so we go to committee of the whole, which is next meeting, and then media question period for the open meeting there. Anything during this? As they all shake their heads, you got it all? So that, we'll have a motion to recess to the closed, please, with the addition of an update on the Incanda Event Center announcement. So Counsel Schuman, seconded by Counsel Malkinson, all those in favor, opposed, and it is carried. Thank you very much. She's a done deal, we'll take five minutes and then go into the closed. Okay, so good afternoon, it's just 1:00, so we're gonna call to order our budget meeting for Monday, April 8th. We'll start off, first of all, we have minutes from the last budget meeting for adoption, Counsel McFadden, seconded by Counsel Wilbur, all those in favor, opposed, and it is carried. And with that, then we'll move on to 3-1. And 3-1 is report 13072, and this is from the Chief Financial Officer, and this is regarding the public consultation questions and responses, and if you notice at the end of it, there is a recommendation, and it's quite a short recommendation, Counsel McFadden, would you like to read it out?
Well, I gotta find it now first.
I'll read it out.
No, 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 no.
Okay.
For those who weren't watching this morning's council meeting.
I, I move that report number 13072 from the Chief Financial Officer regarding public consultation summary of questions and responses be received for information.
Excellent, and is that seconded by Counsel Wilbur. Do we have discussion on that? Hopefully, everybody had time to go through and look at the questions, the responses that were formulated here, and should be in line, hopefully with council's wishes, as we've done in past years. This is what Counsel McFadden will be reading out on the 23rd, so if there's any changes, this would be the time that we'd want to do that, so. Counsel Parzol?
Yeah, I just wondered if, I met with Shelley just briefly this morning, I think there's a slight error, in fact, do you have, have you had, have you had a chance to look at the minutes, Shelley?
Yes, I did. Do you want me to talk about it? Or you can talk about it?
Yes, yeah. You're, you're the author, and I just thought there was a little error there.
Trying to find the.
So which question was it then, Counsel?
To do with the resolution regarding the fiscal gap.
Okay.
So it's page 3 of 9. Where I reference, council received the Gagnon's strategic report at the March 4th, 2013 council meeting. And then I go on to say, which Counsel Parzol brought up this morning, is not quite the, the way it should be worded, we, we will be working with staff to go through a process that explores the concept of the fiscal gap, including where operational program spending can be reduced, so the 2.75 million of fair share funding can be taken out of the operational budget and contributed to a fair share stabilization fund. This will provide council with a means to start the process toward reduced reliance on fair share funding, as requested by the public during the consultation process, and explore future opportunities for exploring plan cost reduction. So I think what happened there was, in my desire to catch the conversation that happened at the, at the table, inadvertently put too much detail about what was discussed versus what was resolved, and that's what Counsel Parzol had brought up this morning, I think, in that staff will be doing a workshop on fiscal gap, and any decision will be deferred until after that.
That's right. Yeah, the council hasn't decided that, it deferred the decision until after the workshop on the fiscal gap.
Yes, so we understand that, are you suggesting that the wording be changed to reflect that then?
Yeah, and I was talking about the process. Capturing some of the details, and I probably should have left out the detail and just said this is the decision, so.
So the minutes of the March 4th meeting are, are surprise, surprise, accurate from my recollection, so if Shelley just works with that, I think, I mentioned it to Jim this morning, and he, he concurred, I believe, I don't want to put words in your mouth there, so just with that reflection.
Okay. Perfect. Okay, did you find any other ones then, Counsel?
No, I didn't.
No? So, any other counselors then? Counsel Malkinson?
I'm just wondering, your worship, if there's something here that can be improved, improved on? These are the questions that are gonna be read out of the budget meeting, well, the next public budget meeting. The question, what percentage of fair share goes to operations, what percentage of the city's revenue is from fair share? The response that's written is, 2013 budget revenues include 11.8 million of fair share funding, which is 29.2% of operating revenues. I was wondering what percent, maybe we ought to have, you know, the actual number of the percentage of fair share, you know, that we receive that goes to operations as well, like, it's, instead of saying, you know, I don't know.
What question you have?
So Shelley?
Yeah, if I could respond to that, Counsel Malkinson, so right at the end of that response, it says for 2013, 1.9 million or 16%.
Is used to fund capital spending.
That's right.
Yeah.
Now, there, there is one thing I want to point out about that statement, that is different than what was taken to the public consultation on the date, I can't remember my dates, because subsequent to that, council approved using gaming for the Calvin Crook Center.
Yes.
So normally, that, that transfer would be fair share money, but now we're swapping, gaming for fair share. So it's, it's, you know, somebody looks at that schedule and they say, well, in the original package, this is what it said, and now you're saying this.
Yeah.
That's why it's, it's, it's happening that way, because information changes, decisions are made, funding goes here and funding goes there, so, just so you're aware of that.
So 84% of the fair share. So 84% of the fair share that we receive is for operational, isn't that right?
And that's always, I think what's been explained in the past, it's always a gray area, too, when you talk about operations, because are we using, under operations is debt repayment. So we could argue that, you know, fair share is being used to, is that still the case, Shelley, before I go too deep into that?
Yeah.
I mean, we've got our debt for the multiplex. We've got other debts that are actually, were capital, but because we take, we do borrowing for it, it now becomes an operating expense to pay off the capital, so.
Well, the difficult thing is, is that, you know, the funding agency doesn't place any restriction on it, and council doesn't place any restriction on it as of today.
Yes.
I don't know if that's gonna change. So we're getting into what is allocated where. The only time we allocate something specifically is if it's from the funding agent, or if council approves, you know, where this money goes. Otherwise, everything is, is, it goes
Goes into the pot.
Goes into the plan and is spent on all the expenditures that council approves, whether it's operational or whether it's capital.
Yeah. And we've always treated all of the fair share as the taxation that way. We don't go up to Walmart and say, your taxes are being spent here.
Mm-hmm.
You know, some people are asking us to say that's what we're doing with fair share, but that's not how the, the formula works, the system works right now, at this point.
That's what I'm saying.
Yeah. So were you actually making a motion for a change to the wording, or you're not understanding it?
No, I was just, I was wanting, it might, yeah, it's okay.
Just want, just want to make sure, okay. So on the rest of the responses, then? Did anybody see any other? There was no Jim-isms to correct this year, so we were good there. Thank you.
Shelley wrote them this year, your worship.
Jim-isms.
Is that a bi-line for speak?
You'll notice there's not one response here that says, maybe you should run for election if you don't. There were several of those last year, so I think Shelley did actually a better job this year.
Makes you plenty of a Jim-isms choice.
Yes.
I don't know, I like the Jim-isms. I think they're pretty.
So, go ahead, Jim.
So there's two elements to this report. The first is the questions and responses, which you are okaying verbatim. So on the one that you've identified, the gap, we'll just take the minutes and make sure we actually accurately capture that you, you intend to look at this, but you've made no decisions about the outcomes.
Yes.
Soon-to-be-acting Mayor McFadden also wanted to raise the topic of whether or not you would share the duties of reading these out.
No.
Or whether you are going to require him to stand there and read them all out.
Yeah.
Personally, I believe it's the acting mayor's role.
Absolutely.
It's why you're paid the big bucks. But that is up, that is up for discussion.
It was just an opportunity, if anybody wanted to be involved. It could, if not, I had no problem.
Yeah. Okay, Charlie?
Sorry, I just want to process here. You've obviously not given any response to your plea for help, but do we, have we, has someone made the motion?
Yes.
They have, okay.
The mo, yeah, we've, well, right now, the motion that Terry put on there was to receive this for information, and then we've got your addition.
Yeah. Which Jim sort of summarized.
Yes, which will be the addition or change to that.
So questions.
One of the, one of the ones is changing the wording, because it wasn't right, accurate. Didn't match the minutes, so we're just switching it up. Jim, is receiving it for information is adequate, then? Because it, we're receiving it for information, and that will automatically take it forward, or do we have to make another motion after that?
No, after you've received it after your discussion with amendments, then, someone has to move
That we do.
delivering these responses to the public.
Okay.
At the April 23 meeting.
Perfect. So is there any more changes to it, first of all? No? So then, for information with that, was the change gonna be under the information, Brenda? Because we've made that.
Mary has a beautiful.
Yes. Just to make sure.
By consensus, council directed the Chief Financial Officer to amend the response on page 3 of 9 of the report to clearly articulate that council will examine the fiscal gap prior to considering removal of 2.75 million for operational funding to create a fair share stabilization fund.
Well, I think it's actually more than that. I don't think council has any commitment to 2.75 million in order to a fair share stabilization fund. Council's only commitment at the moment is to examine the fiscal gap and take that where it leads them.
Yes, I believe that's what Counselor Parzol was trying to, to say, right? So we wind that out, so. Okay, well, with that change, then, all those in favor? Anyone opposed? It's carried. It's now a motion, then, to take it to the public and for Counselor McFadden to read it aloud. The 23rd, Counselor Schuman, Counselor Malkinson.
I could almost go against that, then.
You sure could. Or you can make an amendment that you want somebody else to read it with you.
Fill your boots.
Or hold your hand.
What if I come up lame that day?
Next on the list?
Next on the list is Counselor Parzol.
There you go. Can't come up lame.
So you're gonna make an amendment to that motion?
Yep.
That depends, are we actually being serious here, or are we?
No, no. I was going to say that indeed, he reads it within 20 minutes.
He doesn't have enough air.
Any, any further discussion, then?
Air or hair?
Both.
On that, all those in favor? Anyone opposed? And it's carried. And thank you, Counselor McFadden, for doing that.
You're welcome.
And I apologize fiercely for putting you in this awkward position that you obviously seem a little bit reluctant to do, but you were gonna do an excellent bang-up job. I know you will.
I don't think you do at all, actually, but that's fine.
You don't hear the sincerity in my voice, okay. On that, with nothing else in the budget, unless Jim or Shelley, there's something else?
I was just gonna say, I'm sure that recently departed Margaret Thatcher would have been happy to read these.
That's right.
With that, and seeing no other changes, then, a motion to adjourn.
Nope, we got the five-year plan.
Oh, sorry.
Five-year plan.
Five-year plan.
Sorry, sorry, my bad. 3-2. What's on my other list here? So the five-year plan, thank you. And there is the recommendation there. Counselor Schuman?
Yeah, I've moved the Report Number 15-075 from the Chief Financial Officer regarding the 2013 five-year financial plan. Update report being received. Further, the council accepted invasions as presented and approved the assumptions used in preparing the five-year plan, so that the information can be presented at the next public consultation meeting on April 23, 2013.
Thank you. Thank you. Seconded by Counselor Kenny. Any questions on this? Seeing none? Okay, good. So all those in favor, then? Anyone opposed? It is carried. And just because I was so excited to get to Northern Lights College to say hello and help out with the awards, that's why I was a little eager, so my apologies for skipping over that. Now, I can say is, if there's nothing else, then a motion to adjourn. Counselor Malkinson, seconded by, no, you can't second your own motion.
I was pointing at Terry. Why don't you second it?
Counsel, Counselor Wilbur, all those in favor, opposed? It's carried. And thank you, and we just want to invite everybody out, April 23.
Yeah.
To witness the excitement and be part of it. Okay, thanks, everyone.